City Council meeting. September 9, 2025 is called to order at 6:05 PM. City manager, any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Uh, if we can have roll call, please.
Councilmember Laura.
Present.
Councilmember Lex.
Here.
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Camacho.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
All present.
Uh, we're gonna begin with the invocation by Councilmember Laura, followed by the flag salute from Alexis Quintanilla, second grader over at McGee Elementary.
If you could please rise. Bow your head. God, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to go closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the community of Pico Rivera. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name, in Jesus's name, amen.
Alexis, flag salute.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of our community. My name is Alexis Quintanilla, and I'm in the second grade of McGee Academy of Arts and Science. It is my honor to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand up, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you very much. Thank you, that was outstanding. Alexis, if you want to come forward, we do have a certificate of appreciation from all my colleagues here on the city council. We thank you for your young leadership. We want to recognize you for that. If you could come forward and have your parents. Richard Padilla, and we have a proclamation. I'm gonna share some background on Mr. Padilla. Today, we come together to honor one of Pico Rivera's own, Technical Sergeant Richard Padilla. Richard was born and raised right here in Pico Rivera and graduated from our Rancho High School. He went on to proudly serve our nation in the United States Air Force with the Security Forces and Special Operations, completing five combat deployments around the world. Richard was not only a decorated airman, but also a mentor of a true hometown hero. Tragically, his life was cut short on January 26, 2025. Although he no longer is with us, his legacy of service and sacrifice will always remain. On behalf of the city of Pico Rivera, we honor his memory today. It is my privilege to present this recognition, which will be received on behalf of his brother, George Padilla. So, George, if you could please step forward and accept the honors right here on behalf of your brother. Round of applause for Sir, the sir of service. Next, we have La Caneseria, the meat market. We're gonna recognize Jose Luis Ruiz, originally from Jalisco, Mexico, who began his career at a butcher shop in Southgate. In 2017, through hard work and determination, he purchased that shop and built it into La Caneseria Meat Market. Now, 25 locations across Southern California, including right here in Pico Rivera. La Caneseria, La Caneseria is known for the quality, customer service, and strong community support. And they got some outstanding carne asada there, I contest to that. On behalf of the city of Pico Rivera and the city council, we proudly commend and congratulate Mr. Ruiz and La Caneseria Meat Market for their success and contributions to our community. Now, Mayor Protem Camacho, the one who brought it to our attention, so I want you to do the honors.
And if I may just elaborate a little bit, I mean, as was stated, why don't you guys come on, come on up. Um, as I'm saying that, you know, recognizing our business community is very important because they contribute a lot to this community. But when you also, as was read, this is a true immigrant story about success, about hardworking, and from building, uh, one store into now 25 stores, Pico Rivera was number three, right?
Yes, correct.
Pico Rivera was number three, and now they're, and they're opening their 25th store. Uh, they contribute a lot, and as was stated, if you want, I mean, we have some great meat places here, but if you want some of this stuff, you gotta order, preorder it, because then now you're gonna be in line for a while, that just shows the man.
We have a nap, too.
They got a nap, so, again, on behalf of the city council, on behalf of the city of Pico Rivera, thank you for investing in Pico Rivera, for being part of our community, and we congratulate you. Yes, your success is our thing. Congratulations. Wish you more than you're fifty.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
Ciudad, eh, como bien dijo, tenemos 25 locaciones ahorita. Eh, Pico Rivera fue la, la tercera locación, así que tiene un cariño muy especial para nosotros, y es una de las mejores locaciones también, con, de las mejores ventas. Eh, estamos muy agradecidos, y, y ojalá podamos trabajar un poquito más con la comunidad aquí, con la ciudad, para regresarles un poquito de lo mucho que nos han dado. Gracias, gracias a todos.
And I just wanna add that, uh, La Caneseria Meat Market, we're very active with philanthropy work. Um, we, I wanna brag about this. We've actually fed, we catered to over a thousand police officers across, across Southern California. And I already talked to Mayor Protem Camacho. We wanna come to Pico Rivera with the captain to cater to all the deputies here that serve and protect the city of Pico Rivera, as our CEO mentioned. Uh, Pico Rivera is a very special place. Based at, is one of the highest sales stores for, for us. And I wanna emphasize something real quick, so people don't have to wait in line for like the holidays, for Labor Day and, um, Super Bowl. We have a nap, okay? So, we just launched that two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Before I go on to the next part of the agenda, let me recognize, uh, commissioners in attendance from our Parks and Recreation, our chairperson, Pat Salcedo, and from our sister city commission, Bob Perez. We also have, uh, Sergeant Molina, who's acting on behalf of, of Captain Hernandez, and Assistant Chief, Fire Chief Dow with us. So, thank you, thank you for coming out to this meeting. Okay, the next part. Uh, we have, uh, earlier this year, the city council created a volunteer recognition program to recognize individuals in the community who went above and beyond and continued to try to improve quality of life right here in the city of Pico Rivera. We're gonna recognize a couple of individuals tonight, and we're gonna begin with, let me see, Luis Ruiz, who's received the Community Champion Award. Luis Ruiz has been a dedicated volunteer with our summer service program. For the past six years, even after experiencing a heartbreaking loss of his wife, Luis continued to give his time, supporting our children, the families who rely on the program. His selflessness, dedication, and commitment have touched the lives of our countless children in our community. For these reasons, we honor Luis as a true community champion. And Luis, on behalf of the city council, you are a true champion, and we appreciate all your volunteer work here in the city of Pico Rivera.
I also volunteered for a trip for five and a half years.
Five years volunteering with the Sheriff's Department as well.
Yeah, I volunteered for.
Extensive volunteerism. Thank you, Luis.
Thank you, thank you.
You need to put this, you need to put it in here, see now.
Yeah, I've got a doubt of it.
Yeah, oh, here, here you go, Luis. Right, we're gonna take. Oh, this way to the left.
How about one with his daughter?
Oh, yes.
Daughter? That was the part. I was too. Was you? Thank you.
Okay, this next individual really needs no introduction. You see her all over the community. Uh, Lupe Diaz is a proud and longtime resident of Pico Rivera and retired registered nurse who served the Los Angeles County for 42 years. She raised three children on her own after losing her husband at a young age. Beyond her career and family, Lupe has spent decades volunteering across many organizations, advocating for veterans and children. She has been a longtime member of the Pueblos Pico Women's Club, helping raise and distribute more than $37,000 in scholarships. She also helps with the Christmas Basket Committee, bringing joy to families during the holidays. As the 11th of 18 siblings, Lupe says volunteering keeps her young, and she counts her blessing every day. And you also may have seen Lupe out there with the Go Getters softball as well. And with the Walking Club. It is my great honor to recognize Lupe with the Mayor's Choice Award. Lupe, on behalf of the city council, appreciate what you've done here in the city of Pico Rivera, and help improve quality of life. We appreciate your commitment and dedication, and you'll be receiving the Mayor's Choice Award right here. Thank you. You got a little champ out there?
Oh, he smiled.
Mayor, city council, family, visitors, and residents. I am truly humbled to be standing here today and to receive this award from our mayor, Johnny Garcia. This recognition means so much to me, not only because of what it represents personally, but because it comes from our mayor of Pico Rivera. I want to sincerely thank the mayor, Johnny Garcia, for this acknowledgement. His leadership and support inspire us all to continue working hard and to continue giving to, back to our community. Once again, thank you. I would like to now introduce my family and thank my family for being here. My son Gabriel Diaz, his wife Maribel, my granddaughter Valerie, my daughter Monica Diaz, and her son Valente, and my sister Elsa, and most of all, Ruben Enriquez. Ruben Enriquez has been with me throughout a lot, and I am gone a lot. He support, he supports me in everything I do. He helps me take care of my grandson, Valente, and trust me, I am gone a lot. I go to a club meetings, table meetings, conferences, conventions, and, um, I wanna thank him from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Before we go into the next agenda item, I wanna thank Pam Ugar and all the Parks and Rec staff, Pam, for really pulling together the pieces on these volunteer recognition, uh, as we close out this year. Uh, so, thank you. Uh, let's move forward with, uh, a presentation. Uh, we have from Advents, Advents Health, White Memorial, and Montebello. We have Juan de la Cruz, who's gonna do a presentation. Juan, please do the honors, please.
Good evening, uh, mayor, city council, uh, city team here. Thank you for allowing us to come today. Uh, my name is Juan de la Cruz. I'm the president of the Charitable Foundation for Adventist Health, White Memorial, L.A., and Montebello, and also the Government Relations Executive. Uh, we wanted to come today just to give you an update in terms of, um, our hospital here in Montebello, which is formerly Beverly Hospital. About two years ago, exactly two years ago, we purchased Beverly out of bankruptcy. Um, and that was, uh, intentional. We wanted to make sure that we contribute what we have in L.A. and we bring it to, closer to the, to the areas of Pico Rivera, Whittier, and Montebello. So, today, we just wanted to give you an update of what we, what we're doing, where we started, where we're at, and the vision of the hospital. And hopefully, we can build a longer relationship, just like we did with Montebello. We have an ad hoc committee. We meet quarterly just to talk about issues in the community and how we can support each community. And Pico Rivera is part of our primary service area. So, I wanna also introduce Mara Bryant, who's the administrator in charge of our Montebello site, but also the operations executive for both hospitals.
Hi, so we can go ahead and forward. So, um, you could probably see a little bit, um, that large right or left circle is the, um, service area around our Los Angeles Hospital. Uh, and then on the right is around our Monta, uh, Montebello Hospital. We've always, um, co-mingled honestly with patients between the two hospitals. So, it was a very natural, um, change for us to come out into this neighborhood. Go ahead. So, um, if you look at it in terms of the demographics of the population that we serve in Boyle Heights and compared to the demographics of the Pico Rivera population, they're similar in some aspects. Obviously, the Boyle Heights neighborhood is much more inner-city and has some of those inner-city social determinant issues going on. Um, go ahead. This is the campus that we acquired in Montebello on Beverly Boulevard. Go ahead. Our current capabilities, just so everybody knows, there's always still this rumor that the hospital's still closed, and it's not. So, I, we wanted to make sure people understood. So, we have our full-service emergency room. Um, we give, have adult inpatient care, intensive care, telemetry, med surg. Um, we have four operating rooms that we're using at all the times. And then we have all of the ancillary supports around diagnostic imaging, pharmacy, lab. All those kind of services are, um, fully functional at the Montebello site. And then, we just recently, about a month ago, went through our national accreditation, and we were accredited for both sites, um, just about a month ago. Go ahead. And the key service lines that we're featuring right now, that, that picture in the background is, um, our robotics, uh, with brand-new robotic surgery, um, equipment that we purchased for Montebello. But we're specializing right now in emergency services, general medical, cardiology, gastroenterology, general surgery, robotics, orthopedics, neurology, and limb preservation services. So, those are kind of where we're focusing right now in the Montebello neighborhood. And, uh, just so you can, can see in a few places, we have about 192 beds in the facility. We're currently functioning in about 117 of those beds. Uh, and we are staying busy. Go ahead. We just recently expanded outpatient services. So, when we first got the facility, um, we literally got the facility with 16 days' notice. So, it was a little bit of a scramble at the beginning. Um, if you can imagine someone giving you the city and, uh, telling you you have 16 days to take it over, it'd get a little crazy at the beginning. But we have now expanded into outpatient services. And so, we do have outpatient imaging, um, including kind of all those subcategories of MRI, CT, ultrasound, and interventional radiology. We also have outpatient cardiac stress testing, um, outpatient laboratory testing. And then we have a very extensive program for hyperbaric wound care and healing, which is really important in diabetics, because that's like the number-one cause of people losing their limbs. So, being able to treat it aggressively is important. We are currently going after specialty certifications for this site in primary stroke and, um, getting our emergency department approved for pediatrics. So, that'll be expansion for us coming up. And then we just completed our community health needs assessment, where we did it actually for both communities simultaneously. Go ahead. But looking at the future, kind of the areas that we're focusing in on, really trying to pull more, um, newer, um, younger physicians. When we did take over Beverly Hospital, many of our medical staff were in their 70s and 80s, and we knew that was not gonna take us strongly into the future. So, we're recruiting, um, a lot of new and younger physicians. Uh, we'd like to start focusing. The next one we were really focused on is our interventional cardiology. So, if you have a heart attack, we'd be able to open up any, um, problems you had right away there on campus. And then focusing in on our additional outpatient services. As you saw in that picture, there was a lot of land around the hospital that when we bought, it all came with it. So, we'll be looking at developing that site, um, with medical office buildings, um, potential commercial sites, and then, um, well-being activities.
I just wanted to add, can you go back to the slide, please? Uh, quickly add. So, a lot of the work that we do in L.A., we're, we wanna replicate what we're, what we're doing in Montebello.
Montebello. We have 113-year history at White Memorial, and I know a lot of the council members know about White Memorial, but we want to continue to bring the community resources out here. So one of the programs that we have is our healthcare pathway workforce development programs for at-risk youth, ages 15 to 26. We just last year launched it in Montebello, recruiting out of Montebello Unified, and we plan to expand our services and recruit kids to learn about healthcare pathways because they are lucrative, so we want to give them the opportunity to do that. In addition to that, we're one of the only hospitals, or community hospitals, in L.A. County that has a community well-being center, meaning that you don't have to be a patient to come and get resources from our community. Out of there, we do diabetes prevention programs, we have food pantries, and we just started construction on our community well-being center there that should open at the end of October, and we'll welcome you when it opens. And we can go to the next slide. And this is more of the future and how we're planning for the hospital to look. This is a look at the exterior proposed kind of global view, next slide. Right now, it doesn't look like that. I know many of you know that. And so this is the entry and the entryway, what we're trying to do, we're trying to make sure that people understand this is at Adventist Health, and it's no longer Beverly Hospital. Next slide. So that's how it currently looked, or before. We did remove that because we were having issues with people not understanding where the entrance is, and they thought it was closed, so that's been removed. Next slide. And this is that area, we want to provide a healing garden, similar to what we have in L.A. We want to replicate that and bring a healing garden for family members that are waiting for their loved ones to go out there and just congregate and just get a breath of fresh air, because sometimes you're there for two, three days, and you don't have a fresh air. Next slide. And this is how it's going to look. Next slide. And so that's currently how the entryway of our emergency area looks like. Next slide. Next slide. And this is what we plan to do, our emergency area on our department where we want to make it more welcoming when you come, and patients come in through the emergency department. Right now, they don't know exactly where it's located, so we want to make it conducive and an opportunity for them to see it. Next slide. So that's how we plan to have that emergency department look in the near future. Next slide. And so, you know, this is what we're investing. Just so you know, when we purchased Beverly Hospital out of bankruptcy court, there was a lot of deferred maintenance, there was a big seismic issue at the hospital, so that's the price tag that as a system, we're planning to invest to make sure that the community understands this is a community hospital, and it's there for the primary service areas that we showed earlier, like Pico Rivera, Monterey Park, Whittier and Montebello and others in the area. So with that, that is our presentation. I know it took a little bit, maybe a minute more than we were given, but if there's any questions, we're here to answer that.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have some comments, Ms. Bryant, Mr. de la Cruz, thank you for the presentation. I think all of us know a thing or two about Beverly Hospital as it once was and what it currently took place to be before you took it over. And, you know, I've had my mom there before, and I would say that no doubt the services were going down, and I think the nurses and the medical staff were struggling to just provide the services necessary. So the fact that Adventist Health has taken it over, we all need access to health services. This is a regional benefit, not only for Montebello, but extends to Pico Rivera. So to see all the investment that you're doing, not only from a patient care perspective, but the outpatient services that you mentioned, but also the growth in the buildings and beautification, I think is going to be great. So welcome to our community, welcome to Pico Rivera, and thank you for that investment and for coming today to present and tell us what we're going on. So we'll continue the partnership together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Laura, please.
Are you currently a STEMI-receiving center?
We are not currently a STEMI-receiving center. We have to get the cath lab open before we can even apply for it.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Sanchez?
Yes. Can you provide a little more information about the opportunities that you mentioned for youth that are interested in the health career pathways? How would they get involved? Is it an internship program, or how can we connect our youth to this type of...
It's an internship program, and what I can do is I can send a deck to, I believe, Cynthia. If she's here, I apologize, I sent her the deck this morning when I was supposed to send it yesterday, so I'll go ahead and send it to her, and then we can talk if you have any questions, or you want to point us into the school districts and help us get into this, we can present, that would be great.
Thank you very much. We have a youth center, a teen center, that I'd love to get connected to that, and many students and young adults in college, that definitely we would love to connect them to that career pathway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just want to give an appreciation to the Adventist Health White Memorial brand coming into Montebello, our neighboring city. You know, it's unfortunate that for many years, the Beverly Hospital had a reputation. It visually was dilapidated, and it's frankly depressing driving by, taking a look at that. And I know that the brand at Adventist Health White Memorial has quality health care. I've had family members stay there and receive care, and currently receive care, so I'm very proud that you came, took over, and because you have a good quality reputation, you're going to clean up that hospital, build up the reputation and add that necessary medical attention that we need in this region. So again, thank you to the board of Adventist Health for coming onboard here in our region.
Thank you. Do want to echo my sincere thank you. I visited your location there with my mom earlier this year, last year, and appreciated the professionalism and the service that was rendered there at the facility. Again, thank you for coming out and presenting to us. I also want to recognize Danielle Romero, councilmember in Montebello. Danielle Romero, thank you for joining us this evening. Again, thank you very much. Okay, we have a public hearing?
None received, Mayor.
Motion to approve? Herbie, none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
I didn't touch it that time. Okay, let's go into public comments. I'm going to begin with David Angelo. Where's David Angelo? David Angelo, if you want to, the mic right there, please.
Please, Council, before I begin, I, could you... I just want to say, those who saw me stumble and fall, I'm okay, but I do ask you, don't tell this to my wife, okay? Anyway, Council, thank you very much for letting me speak, and I'm going to read, because I don't want to fall into the same trap that I always do where I rear off and I don't have the time. So, Council, I'm here tonight to keep you informed of Pico Rivera Sister Cities Association activities in the hope that you continue to give us your support and participation. Our activity began in June with a visitation to our sister city, Chapala, and their sister cities committee. We were received on a Monday in our hotel patio with food, drink and music. The next day, Tuesday, we all had breakfast at the plaza, and later, we were invited to the musicians' welcoming gathering that was prepared for the upcoming music event, the music spectacular that was going to be held at the train station cultural center. The next day, Wednesday, the first lady provided a tour through Chapala's deep, and then we were provided with a VIP seating for the musical spectacular that followed, where we experienced a musical event that you experience only in Chapala. The next few days, in the next few days, we boarded our plane and came home, and to the man, all were looking forward to return. Back home here, a few days ago, we met with a delegation from Tlaco Mulco led by their vice mayor. We had our mayor, Protem Gustavo Camacho, leading us. We also had our association there and club, Tlaco Mulco USA, all present to sign a document to reaffirm our sister city relationship. From San Luis Potosi, we received sad news. Due to the visa complications, the estudiantina will not be able to visit us in December, but they asked to be received and they want to come in the month of July, July 2026. And also, the city of San Luis Potosi is not going to be able this year to conduct the festival of Ciudadanos Hermanos this year, but they look forward to receiving a delegation from Pico to celebrate 57 years of us being their sister city. And lastly, you are all invited to the Grito Ceremony in Downey, where the mayor of Guadalajara will be the honored guest.
Next, we have Zelzin Mendez.
Hello, councilmembers. Good evening. My name is Zelzin Mendez, and I am a proud graduate of El Rancho High School, class of 2019. Tonight, I stand before you not just as myself, as the voice of my mom, Anna Pantoja. My mom has an immigration status with no criminal record, who has lived in the United States for over 35 years. She has always been a hard-working, loving, strong and resilient mother to her three children, Yocelyn Mendez, Raul Mendez and me. Like so many immigrants, she came here searching for a better life, a chance to raise us in a place where we could pursue our future and our goals. Before I share my mom's story, I want to begin thanking the support I received from family, friends and the community. The constant support, every repost, share and spreading the word, the prayers, their kind words, and the donations have carried us through this storm. You don't know how much it means to me and my family. My mom Anna was in disbelief at the love and the support she received. She never imagined such a strong community who would stand beside her. She will never forget this, and neither will I. Because of the support through every share, repost and donation, our fight reached the councilmembers of Pico Rivera. I want to thank the city mayor, Andrew Lara, who personally reached out to me along with other councilmembers. They not only gave us encouragement, but also provided financial support that allowed us to properly secure Elora in Arizona. Without them, my family would still be fighting while my mom remained detained. To this day, they continue to help us fight her case in California, and for that, we are truly grateful. But let me take you back to the day everything changed on July 21st. At around 6:15, my mom, Anna Pantoja, was barely a mile from our home in Pico Rivera while driving on Rex Road toward Paramount Boulevard getting to work, when an unmarked vehicle with dark tinted windows flashed its lights behind her, thinking it was the police, she pulled over. Suddenly, six to seven more unmarked vehicles surrounded her. ICE officers had shouted at her, "Get out of the car." They proceeded to pull her out from the vehicle, zip-tied her wrists tightly where she couldn't feel her hands from the loss of circulation, and took her away without any explanation, basically kidnapping her. By 7:20 in the morning, our world shattered. We received a call, my mom was detained at Los Angeles Detention Center. Later that day, we were allowed just 10 minutes to see her during visitation. We thought she would remain there while we figured things out, but that night at 11, she called us again. She was being transferred 460 miles away to Eloy Detention Center in Arizona. One day, she was ripped away from us. The weeks that followed, we were the most painful, stressful and heartbreaking season of our lives. Calls from her were rare and costly. Sometimes we got 30 minutes, sometimes an hour. My mom confessed she wanted to give up because she didn't want her children to suffer through this. She described the detention center as a jail cell. Routine, silence, powerless waiting, and every time the time was coming close to hanging up, it broke our hearts, but we never gave up. Through all the stress, waiting and frustration, I reminded her again and again of Isaiah 41:10. "So do not fear, for I am with you; do not be dismayed, for I am your God; I will straighten you and help you. I will uphold you with the righteous right hand." Those words gave her calm when her strength was fading. It was within the tribulation that made her feel the way she did. On Sunday, August 10th, my siblings and I drove 860 miles round trip to Arizona. Our visitation was set at 1:00 p.m. just to see her for one hour. We made it the best we could to be with her. We gave her hugs, cries, tears of joy, also sadness with her, and being able to talk to her like how we would when she was home. After that one hour, heartbreak again. We had to leave her behind even though we didn't want to. That moment was one of the hardest that me and my siblings had to endure, but our community kept us strong. We kept the faith. My mom's bond hearing was set for August 20th. Despite the odds, despite the lawyer warning us that her chances were slim, we prayed. We gathered documents, letters and evidence. We pushed forward. The day before, I had asked the community to pray over this bond hearing to go well and have the great news. Then in that courtroom, a miracle had happened. The judge made my mom's case part of the jurisdiction, and her bond was granted. I cried tears of joy, even the lawyer was in disbelief, saying that it was a miracle in rare cases like hers. On Monday, August 25th, ICE approved the bond, and though they said it would take two weeks for her release, by the early morning of Tuesday, August 26th, at 3:30, my mom was freed from ICE custody. We were disbelief that she was released in 24 hours after her bond was approved and excited to see her come home. She was taken to a church placed on a Greyhound bus, and by 10:00 p.m. that night, we embraced her at a union station in Los Angeles. After a month trial and tribulations, heartbreak and what felt like a long waiting season, and remaining in faith, we were happy that she was finally home with us. I share my mom's story tonight, not just for us, but for the families still living this nightmare. This is about humanity. Families are being torn apart, many of those who are working hard are being aggressively targeted and taken from the streets. Children are left wondering if their parents will ever come home. Inside the detention center where my mom was at, where she became close with people, those around her are people who have been there waiting for six months, eight months, one year, even two years, fighting for their case. Some as young as 17 years old are just fighting for a chance, which is heartbreaking to hear. No one deserves to be fired this much to remain here for a better opportunity in this country. That's why we stand strong with many that are being taken. We cannot be silent. My mom's story has shown me that community, faith and persistence can move mountains, but it also showed me that how many others remain voices and trapped, and so I ask all of us to continue being the voices for those who cannot speak, to stand for those who are suffering and to remember that at heart of all of this are human beings, mothers, fathers, uncles, aunts, grandparents and many adolescents that are young who only want a better life. Immigrants are the backbone of our economy, the ones that rise early, who labor late and who give everything to create a future here. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
You can hear me?
You can hear me?
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to thank you for bravery, testimony, and for sharing that here this evening. Now, council member Lara, you wanted to share?
Yeah, just real briefly, this was a fight. This was a righteous fight that I was allowed to be part of. And just something about Zelzin, she's not going to stop. Zelzin will not stop. Zelzin, it may take a few times to explain things, but Zelzin will not stop. And we got a good lawyer, you know? We got a good lawyer, Michael, from Arizona, and he was very realistic. And he said, "Look, they're not granting bond."
No.
And he's like, "Even if you get bond, they're not going to release her because they're automatically going to appeal the decision." And there's so many things this immigrant community is working against. One, they worked against, they went through, and they fired all the Biden immigration judges. So now, anyone who's there just toes the line. And then they went back and they reinterpreted the rules. They overturned like 25 years of case law and case interpretation, whereby if you're undocumented and you were detained, if you've been here more than two years, you are automatically granted a bond hearing and bonded and out.
Yeah.
They've reinterpreted that, and they said, "No, you are not allowed a bond hearing at all. We don't care how long you've been here." But she got a bond hearing. And the lawyer told us, "Look, there's a lawsuit, there's a lawsuit before the immigration court. We believe it's, they're going to overturn their silly interpretation of this. I'll take the case." Because he wasn't taking these cases.
No.
You know, $3,500. Well, $3,500 that came from a GoFundMe, but the community supported, right? And the family knew that it was going to be backstopped by this city council, by this city, so that they could replenish that $3,500, because she has a long fight still to go. She has the immigration fight to go. She just got bonded. So then, she got the bond. And the lawyer said, "Look, as soon as it pops up on the computer, you pay it." He's like, "She's not getting out, though, but you pay it, though." And Zelzin paid it. She was refreshing that page probably every minute. And as soon as it popped up, she paid it, and then she got out. And, you know, they threw her at a Greyhound. She has, does she still have an ankle monitor? Yeah, they put an ankle monitor on her, even though the ankle monitor is not court-ordered by a judge. You know, they probably did that because there's probably some company making money off the whole monitor, right? It's all scam. And I talked to the lawyer the next day, and I said, "What happened? You said she wasn't going to get out." I mean, we're glad. He said, "There was probably a glitch." And they paid the bond in such a way that they were able to beat the federal appeal, and she's out. And then yesterday, we learned that that court case we were hoping, nope, no one's getting out now. So it doesn't matter your immigration, it doesn't matter DACA status, if they get you, you're not coming out. They don't want you out because they want to break you. That's exactly what this family went through as we were talking about all this. It was an emotional roller coaster. And there were times where the mom just wanted to sign papers and go back to Mexico and just be done with it, right? But she's been here, she's lived in Pico Rivera for 30 years. All three of her children have grown up in Pico Rivera, they're all El Rancho graduates. This is what that fund was put together for. So, you know, I thank my colleagues, I thank this community for taking on a righteous fight.
Thank you. Thank you, councilman. Dr. Sanchez?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, gracias señora Pantoja, for your courage, and also for sharing your testimony with us. There's so many people, not just in California, across the nation, that are going through this. And I believe it's important to share the testimony of what you've gone through, what you're going through, and to help others of how they can get through it. And you have allies here. We are willing to support our residents and to share with you. I'm proud to say my dad is from Mexico. He was born in Mexico. He's a permanent resident, and we are here to take care of our people. I also would like to share, if possible, would you be willing to leave your testimony that you wrote with our city clerk, so we can track some of the information that our residents have had to go through in this immigration process? You could email it, or if you have a written copy, you can give it to our city clerk, Cynthia Yala. You can take any personal information that you'd like out of it. But I think if we may, share that information with, just for our records and to share with others, if anyone should contact us. And this is just to document just the pain, the hurt, the suffering that it's causing our families with this immigration policies and practices that are going on today. Additionally, I want to share, if I may, I'll take the privilege, the gentleman there to your left has also had the courage, thank you, Adrian Martinez. We're proud to say one of our newest park staff, he stood up to support his colleague at Walmart. And thank you for your bravery, your courage, and for sharing your story. And I think it's really important that we continue to document this, whether written, a video, and sharing on social media. This has really been an important factor in helping individuals that are going through what you're going through. So I just want to say thank you very much for your courage and for sharing and being here today.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. Would you, did you want to share anything?
Bueno, en español, ¿verdad? Quiero agradecer a la ciudad de Pico Rivera, a todo el cónsulo, todos ustedes. Muchas gracias por su apoyo, muchas gracias por su ayuda. Gracias por estar allí de la mano con nosotros en esto tan difícil que nosotros estamos pasando. Verdad, todavía la carrera sigue, pero venimos con un corazón muy agradecido por todo lo que ustedes han hecho por mi familia, al apoyar a mi hija, al caminar de la mano con nosotros en todo esto. En todo lo que nosotros hemos pasado y pues todavía vamos a seguir adelante, ¿verdad? Con lo que sigue, primeramente Dios, ¿verdad? Yo creo en Dios y creo que es un Dios de milagros. Sé que por un milagro estoy aquí y por el gran apoyo que ustedes nos han dado. Y eso nunca lo vamos a olvidar. Gracias comunidad de Pico Rivera, gracias a la ciudad de Pico Rivera, gracias a cada uno de ustedes por su ayuda, su apoyo, su aporte, y por haber estado ahí. Gracias por la ayuda financiera que nos dieron, porque si no esa ayuda, ¿nosotros qué podríamos hacer? Muchas gracias. Gracias al señor Lara. Muchas gracias por estar al pendiente, por estar, ninguna llamada, él dejó de contestarle a mi hija, y todo eso se agradece. Que Dios le bendiga, que Dios les bendiga a cada uno de ustedes. Muy buenas noches.
Gracias. And council member Lara, we want to thank you for your leadership in assisting the family.
And again, thank you, Councilman Lara, for your leadership on that. You know, it's just, I want to take this opportunity to, you know, reinforce and reiterate, and I'm glad that we had an opportunity to hear a story, a story of a human, of individual, a life of someone and a family. You know, many of us who be in this room, you know, have become desensitized, and we think that this is an approach of, "Let's go after criminals." We all know that's not the case, and we heard this story, like Ms. Pantoja's story, there are many, many stories. We cannot get desensitized like this is okay. We got to speak up. We got to say something. Just because you might be a second, third, fourth generation, and you might be, you know, so far from it, it affects us, it affects our community. This is wrong. What's happening out there is wrong. It's not about whether you think immigration policy is right or should be reformed, that's one thing. Whether you agree with a party or another, it's another thing. It's not about policy, it's not about politics, it's not about party. It's about humanity. It's about the story of Ms. Pantoja that are reflective out there. You cannot just speak and remain and continue life as if you just worry about self. We got to protect community, we got to be out there, we got to protect all of us. This is about humanity. Thank you, Ms. Pantoja, for your perseverance. Thank you to your family, to you, for doing what we can. And as my colleague mentioned, you know, we were all taught to protect the innocent, to protect the elderly. So when we see a wrong, we step up and protect it. And I'm glad that one of our own, at one moment in time, Mr. Martinez, Adrian Martinez, did just that. You know, although what's being said out there is not quite the case, we all saw the video. But as he had to be released from Walmart, we took him in, and we have to, and he self-accepted himself out there, and now he's dealing with his own stuff. But again, this is about humanity. Don't let yourself be desensitized. And like if these individuals are second-class humans, who are not, they're not. Protect, stand up, that's what's right. It's not about party, it's not about politics, it's not about policies, it's about humanity and human rights. Thank you.
Can I just say one thing? I do want to say that I do want to thank you guys for letting me have this opportunity, because I feel like how I said, there's a lot of people that are not able to speak up, because they're in fear of wanting to walk out in the streets, and then boom, they're taken away, without an explanation like how my mom went through. And with the protest that we had in Pico Rivera, I thought it was very like open, and the fact that each and every individual that was there, like it felt very wholesome, because we're there for our community. So just to see that in social media, because I kept on posting GoFundMes, I told people to share. I have friends that are here that came to support me with this and to hear this story as well, and because I want to be the voice, and obviously, they want to be the voice for those too. So I just want to be able to thank you guys for giving me that opportunity, so, yeah.
Thank you, Zelzin. Thank you, Ms. Pantoja.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have a few concerns. One of them is the bike lane. I had attended a meeting here that was held in July, and my concern was that for the bike lane, sign is that, that they post a big, large reflecting sign, which is found over there by the Billa Restaurant. I took a picture of it. I met Javier, and I shared that with him, and he said he was going to look into it. And also, Pat Ugar, attended the Friendly Senior Club, and she, for a presentation, after the presentation, I shared with her my concerns. She took my name and number, and the very next day, somebody called me, and we discussed the matter. And my other concern is the planters. In the planters, there's a very tall plant, and it's blocking the view of the oncoming traffic. And I can exit either on Coolhurst, sorry, I forgot, I live on Coolhurst, and I can exit on Coolhurst and Mines. That plant is blocking my view from the Paramount signal. So it's even more dangerous on my side. It's bad enough the cars are blocking my view, depending on the day or the time, it's very hard to get out of my street. My other concern is Rio Vista School. When we go for a walk in the morning, we end up through the Roseme to the Kaufman Pico Street. And I noticed there's also, it's another plant situation, there's some trees or plants, whatever, it's already taken up half of the sidewalk. And then, right in front of that tree is an electrical box, which is taking more space. And I noticed just a couple days ago, they had also put another planter in that area, and those plants are taller than the ones that are located on Mines. My concern is the cars enter through one section of the, sorry, I'm getting nervous. They enter on one side, and the cars exit on the other driveway, and that's exactly where the plants are blocking the view. A lot of parents walk to school to pick up their children, and children run. They don't, you know, they run away from the parents, and a car might not see the child if he runs in front of the cars. So that's my concern on that one. And the last one, speed bumps. We need speed bumps over there by the new shopping area by Ross Burlington and that area, so I just wanted to say quickly, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Alvia. Steve, can we follow up with Alvia Vega on those concerns, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Lauren Talbot, and I'm the Community Library Manager at the Pico Rivera Library and the Rivera Library. Here are our updates for September. LA County Library's annual bookmark contest is currently ongoing. Aspiring artists in grades K to 12 can submit an original bookmark design inspired by books, reading, libraries, or their own imagination. The entry form is available at all libraries and on our website. Entries must be turned in by October 18th. For National Preparedness Month, the American Red Cross is hosting a program for kids called Prepare with Pedro at the Pico Rivera Library on Tuesday, September 16th, at 4:00 PM. Kids will learn about disaster preparedness and how to stay safe during a disaster. For Hispanic Heritage Month, the Pico Rivera Library Book Club will be discussing the classic Bless Me Ultima by Rodolfo Anaya on Tuesday, September 16th, at 6:00 PM, and copies of the book are available at the Pico Rivera Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Talbot. We have Rodell Aviso?
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and honorable City Council members. My name is Rodell, and I am with the Community Health Alliance. Our coalition focuses on informing and educating the community on the dangers of secondhand smoke, which I am here this evening to share with you. Secondhand smoke includes traveling smoke from the burning ends of tobacco and other plant-based products. This also includes aerosols exhaled by users of electronic smoking devices such as e-cigarettes. Secondhand smoke causes adverse health effects both for adults and children, including stroke, lung cancer, sudden infant death syndrome, and respiratory illness, to name a few. According to a 2025 State of Tobacco Control Report published by the American Lung Association, Pico Rivera received a grade of an F for smoke-free multi-unit housing. The recently collected public opinion surveys, which you have folders of, we found that two in five Pico Rivera residents reported being exposed to secondhand smoke in their home in the past year. Additionally, 70% of residents surveyed live with someone with a medical condition that is worsened with secondhand smoke exposure. Similarly, 94% of residents surveyed would prefer to live in a multi-unit housing property that is completely smoke-free. The Community Health Alliance aims to raise awareness about the risks of secondhand smoke, particularly in multi-unit housing. As the Pico Rivera general plan prioritizes housing and the healthy community, we believe that our coalition is aligned with the city's goals of creating a safe and affordable housing for Pico Rivera. The number of units of multi-unit housing is expected to grow as new developments are constructed in the city. People who live in multi-unit housing are more likely to be exposed to secondhand smoke in their home as shared heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems can distribute secondhand smoke throughout a building. This means that in some cases, tenants may be involuntarily exposed to environmental health risks due to nearby smoking activity. The residents of Pico Rivera deserve to breathe smoke-free air. Even if a family in a multi-unit housing building adopts a household rule prohibiting smoking in their home, secondhand smoke can still enter their unit from other units and areas where smoking is allowed. In 2014, the U.S. Surgeon General concluded that there is no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Smoke-free protections keep our most vulnerable community members safe and help smokers quit and reduce tobacco use. In addition, establishing smoke-free communities make it less likely that youth and young adults start smoking. Twenty jurisdictions across LA County have implemented smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinances, including the cities of Norwalk, Compton, Belgrade, and Almonte. The coalition hopes that the city of Pico Rivera considers a similar solution to addressing this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodell. We have Richard Burns?
Good evening. My name is Richard Burns. I'm a representative with the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. First off, I want to say thank you for all your hard work. The decisions that you make sometimes aren't the easiest, and it goes unnoticed sometimes. So thank you very much. In the past few months, we've been talking about the Whittier Narrows Dam project. We had reached out to Assembly 56 and Congressional District 31. They are working on writing a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers and see what they can do about local hire, which was one of the things that we want in Pico Rivera. You know, we want people to go to school here, want people to work here, tire here with a good paying wage. So labor standards for those projects, instead of having somebody come from out of state and all the tax money goes with them, that's something we're working on. We have other future projects that we'd like to have labor standards. The Mercury Project is coming up. We'll be in negotiations with them when that comes up. Again, you know, good paying wage and local hire. Can't stress the local hire enough. I was fortunate, when I was younger, I was able to work in my area. I started off, for like the first year, when I really didn't have any money and I got into trade, I was able to save a couple pennies, buy the house, and now I live in Almonte. And then the projects that are coming up, Project 2035, going to be a lot of work there. That's going to create a lot of opportunities, again, for local hire and the surrounding cities, where people don't have to drive past Pico Rivera, go to LA, go to Torrance. I've been looking at the plans, and like I said, you guys got a lot of hard work going up, and I want it to happen, because your plans, Plan 3035, they're beautiful. They're beautiful. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. That's our public comments. I do have one written comment by Michael Wazcheck. Subject is immigration. We do have a presentation, but before we go into the presentation, Steve, I just want, we're gathering here because our chambers is being renovated. It'll be a state-of-the-art facility once we're, we're completed. So we appreciate your patience, your understanding. This is our first meeting, with the mic checks and everything. We appreciate everybody's support and cooperation on this. Mr. Camuna?
Yes, thank you, Mayor City Council. As part of getting the city of Pico Rivera's name out there, we've been able to attract the attention of the Ola Festival. We have a representative to talk a little bit about that. That's this Saturday. You guys have the information. Hopefully, we'll all see you there, but I'll turn it over to the representative to talk a little bit about the festival.
Hello, everyone. Honorable Mayor and Council Members, it's an honor to be here tonight in the city of Pico Rivera. I'm Samuel Dweck. I'm the director and the founder of the Ola Mexico Film Festival, which starts this weekend. It's going to be its 17th year. We are proud to bring the best films that come out of Mexico to Los Angeles. We've been doing that by flying over directors, filmmakers, and as many of you know, Mexican filmmakers have won all the Oscars in recent years, with Iñárritu, Cuaron and del Toro leading the path. So I'm very proud. It brings me a lot of honor to be able to represent Mexican cinema in Los Angeles, and this year in particular, I'm extremely happy to bring it to the city of Pico Rivera, to, to make sure that people get a sense of pride of their Mexican community and their Mexican filmmaker brothers and sisters that are doing the best that we can to make good cinema. And this Saturday, we're going to be screening at the Cinepolis Pico Rivera, the film Mesa de Regalos, which is, the, the, the main actor is Cos Eduardo Derbez, the son of famous actor Eugenio Derbez. This film was the number-one box office hit this year and also in the last five years. The director will be in attendance. We have a big red carpet, and a lot of media and celebrities will be around. The film already sold out, so that's great news. But then just today, the kind people of Cinepolis gave us another cinema. So just, we, we got a few more tickets to sell, so we're looking forward to a very exciting screening on Saturday night to, to share with the community here in Pico Rivera, and hopefully many of you in attendance. So, yeah, that's, that's, that's about it. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may, I did get the question. Can residents or anyone interested in attending go and purchase tickets still currently for this event? They just go to the Cinepolis and ask in the front main office? Got it. Okay. So the general residents can attend this, go on, on the website and purchase their tickets. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. Okay, agencies on tonight's agenda, City Council, we have items two to 17 on consent.
Make a first.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any discussion on any items? There be none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Camacho?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
City Manager report?
Mayor, I don't have too much to report. I do want to thank the Sheriff Department for the capture suspect of a recent homicide we had here in the city, diligent, working on capturing the other. Again, I wanted to thank them for all their hard work and effort on that. Also, want to take the time to congratulate our chief, Doe. Now he's been, he was interim, now he's permanent, representing our community. So thank him for his attendance. In addition, I just want to let you know, there's a lot of community concerns out there regarding public safety. So I've met with the captain. I'm sure the mayor will get into his public comments regarding some recent meetings we also had with our congregations. So again, thank you.
Okay, let's go with the good of the order, AB 1234. Councilmember Laura, we'll start with you, and we'll work our way around the horn.
I just real briefly want to just thank all the hard work by city staff. I know we've been away for, I think, a month and a half, but work still goes on. Just the mayor, city, city manager, Parks and Recs, the concerts were excellent. The summer daycare programs are excellent. Just, just everything all around. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lutz?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I do also want to echo my colleagues' compliments of our, our city staff, that we just completed these wonderful concerts in the park. And anytime you have events that are free to bring the community out and they open fresh air, to hang out, to meet their public officials, their local sheriff's department that is their partner, their neighbor, protects them, and our LA County Fire Department as well. That's what you call a great community that's united. I got a couple things here. I typically don't talk too much, and we're going to keep it that. We're going to keep it nice and short. So I want to acknowledge all of our commissioners that are here in attendance. I thank you for that. And of course, we did have a council member, a newly appointed council member from Montebello, Daniel Romero. And of course, our, our sheriff's department, I want to thank them for protecting and keeping us safe in our wonderful community of Pico Rivera. And of course, our LA County Fire Department Chief, thank you very much for being here as well. Mayor, my condolences. Our, our mayor lost his mother recently, and it's a very terrible thing, but of course, my deepest condolences to you here. Regarding items AB 1234, I attended the Gateway Council of Governments Retreat this past week, as well as the California Contract Cities event. And to vent, keep us up-to-date on California laws and federal laws that affect us in our community. The great thing about being a part of California Contract Cities is that we ensure that we keep local government control, and we have the California state, working to rapple that away from us. Our collective efforts, being a part of organizations like California Contract Cities and Independent Cities, help us retain the local control. So I want to thank our city manager for allowing us to be members of that. And finally, there is a comment that I want to give in regards to our most recent concert in the park. We had a little situation there, and thankfully everything turned out correct. And so, in light of that recent incident in the concert in the park, the most recent one that we had, I'd like to address the topic of public safety here in our city. Now, during that event, individual unlawfully crossed into the restricted area near the performance stage, passed sheriffs, and passed the private security, bypassing both entities and personnel, and the individual's actions endangered possibly the members of the audience, the performers, and the city officials. Now, that person was promptly detained and subsequently arrested. And the city of Pico Rivera takes public safety very seriously. We all do. And such behavior will never be tolerated. And we remain committed to ensuring that our community events are safe and enjoyable for all residents and visitors, now and in the future. But again, I want to stress that our public safety is paramount, number one. As you can see, we are, are always making sure that our public is protected. Want to keep that well into the future. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Dr. Sanchez?
Yes, thank you. Regarding in my report for AB 1234, I want to report that I attended the National Association of Latino Elected Officials Annual Conference in Georgia, and that was, that was in, that was last month in August. I also attended the California Contract Cities Fall Summit in Oceanside just this past weekend, which as Councilmember Lutz mentioned, this is an opportunity for us to learn from other states, other councils within California, as well as to learn about legislative policies, practices that are not only statewide and local, but, but nationwide. There were a number of panels, one being related to immigration, immigration policy, lessons learned, city of LA, as well as the, a consulate from Mexico was a panelist. So we received a great deal of information, and were able to create partnerships, as well as networks with other elected officials, as well as legislators at the federal, state, and, and local levels. So these conferences are really important for us to get out there and gather information. And, and as I'm learning now, these other cities are also relying on us, because ICE has moved on to other cities, and they, they're being impacted throughout the nation, and they are calling on us and asking us questions. So I think it's important for us to keep collaborating, not only on immigration policy, but just a number of policies from housing, healthcare, every topic that impacts our community. So it's great to attend and represent Pico Rivera at the national, state, and county levels. So thank you. Third, I wanted to share that I attended with, with Mayor and my colleagues, the kickoff for El Rancho Unified District, and they're a great partner, and it's great to attend these events with our school district and superintendent. That was the day before school started at El Rancho. And then I also wanted to share that I was invited to be a keynote, as well as to attend the Smoke-Free Housing Forum. That was hosted by the Institute of Public Strategies, and I am proud to share we had also some partners from the El Rancho School District attend, as well as some of our commissioners and community members. So those are a few of the events that I attended this past month. Although we did not have a city council meeting, rest assured, we were all very, very busy, and that was, I just reported the not fun stuff, not including all the concerts in the park, lunch program, summer camps, and all of the other fun stuff that went, that went on. So thank you to the Parks and Recreation Department for keeping that going, and, and all of the events that we have at the, here at the senior center. There are so many things going on. So just because we don't have a council meeting, that definitely means that we're probably out there hit the ground running, just like the staff. And so we're glad to be back and have our meeting to report out. I did want to see if I could get, I believe I might need a second motion on two items. One item is I would like to have a conversation, I don't know if it'll be a committee, so to speak, but a conversation to continue regarding the multi-unit housing, smoke-free policies. We have a number, hundreds of units coming up with that Mercury Project, and I know that it's, it impacts our health, but I would like to also include our mobile home parks, because although it's not an apartment, many of the mobile home parks have a shared space, shared places. And if someone is smoking, there's nowhere for them to go. And so I think that would be a, a tool for us to use. And I believe the Institute of Public Strategies has best practices and other model examples of what other cities and what we can create for ourselves. So if, if I can get a second for that?
You have a second.
Thank you. And I believe we've already had some information from them, they've been sharing, but if we could formally pursue that, I'd love to be involved. And then second, I received some feedback from residents regarding parking. As part of the issues of, we're growing because we have more housing, we have more traffic, parking has become a problem, or it is a problem on Whittier Boulevard, as well as Durfee. One of my particular concerns is that it's preventing our businesses from, people coming in and out easily of buying coffee or food, if people are parking overnight and staying long periods of time parking on the public sidewalks of, of Whittier Boulevard and Durfee. There are a number of businesses there that's been brought to our attention. I believe this is not the first time. And so perhaps we could pursue another, if we don't have an existing already ad hoc regarding parking and limiting overnight parking in certain areas, or limiting, you know, making certain areas one hour, two-hour parking versus free public overnight parking, and then those cars only move their cars when it's a street sweeping day.
Dr. Sanchez, Steve, can we add Dr. Sanchez's comments to the ad hoc on parking to look into that?
Do we need a second? Or we already have a parking ad hoc, right?
Yeah.
Yep. So if you can add that to. Additionally, I wanted to share, we are going to, we have a vacancy. Our city clerk can correct me with the information, but we will be looking for members to serve on our Mobile Home Park Rental Review Board. The applications are open, and I am to appoint a member-at-large and a member of a mobile home park owner. So there will be another number of vacancies available for, you must be a Pico Rivera resident, and be interested in these types of policies. You do have to submit an application by September 30th, and city clerk, how do they get that online?
That is correct. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, all the information is currently on the city's website, and currently can be found under the Community and Economic Development portion of the website. All the details are there, and we're going to be able to link it to the city clerk's page. So you'll be able to find it in two ways.
Okay, thank you. So if you know anybody interested, particularly in the mobile home policy, and wants to be appointed as a commissioner, they need to get that application in to the city clerk by September 30th.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. I want to recognize Estra Saliz, our planning commissioner in attendance. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Mayor Pro Tem Camacho, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to echo our comments as it relates to the big summer festivals that we've had in the city. It's not a, a easy production. It requires a team effort, not only obviously led by Parks and Recs Department Director Ugar, but Public Works, as well as our Sheriff Department, Fire Department. It's an entire team effort. And, you know, again, nobody does it better than Pico Rivera, as it relates to these big level concerts. So congratulations to everyone. We had the opportunity to reaffirm our relationship, our sister-city relationship with Lajo Mulco Jalisco, Mexico, which there were delegations in town, where they were acknowledged at the last concert. So thank them for being there. Also, attended the Fall Educ- Um, also, um, attended the Fall Education Summit by California Contract Cities, just recently talking issues of public safety, uh, housing trust, amongst others, and a lot of legislative stuff. I chair, uh, legislation for California Contract Cities Association, as, as I'm hearing about parking issues, housing, and so forth. I mean, these are the types of issues that we're fighting. Sacramento legislators are continuing introducing laws that are taking local control from city and local governments, um, not allowing us to truly plan accordingly as we should. There's ADUs that, you know, some like them, some don't. They don't come with parking requirements, so as we talk about parking issues, it's not the city that's allowing this, it's the state that's creating new laws that are now pushing us into this pressure of less parking, less, um, you know, we need more housing, but there's a proper way of doing it, and in our opinion, um, the majority of the folks in Sacramento don't come from local government and don't understand the impacts that they're doing because it's drawing services, more public safety issues and so forth. So, we'll continue to advocate, not only for Pico Rivera, but many of the cities throughout California, because it is a big issue, and, um, and, you know, we're, we're, we're continuing to fight that fight. Um, yeah, lastly, uh, I've not attended also Naleo Conference, um, and echo my colleagues' comments as it relates to the subject matter there. I'm a former board member as well for the National Association of Latino Elected Officials, and that is it. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Mayor, if I may, one more?
Please.
I wanted to give recognition deserved to, um, our Southwest Patrol. Um, we, they came on board to help us, um, in the parks, and just at the incidence of the concert in the park, they really stepped up. Um, you know, deputies are so busy, captains busy, we have large murder thing, we have serious business they're attending to. Um, and when we, the Southwest Patrol was present at the park, um, as well as Councilmember Lutz and all of my colleagues, um, these are, you know, serious concerns for safety, and we have not only our deputies, but our, um, our Park Patrol as well, that, not just for the parks, but the entire city, and we appreciate, um, your, um, your staff that were there to, to support, and we felt really protected and supported. They just jumped in action, no questions asked, and, and were there to really assist our chef, our, um, our deputies and our, our sheriffs, so I want to give you recognition as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. Um, my remarks this evening are, Pico Rivera Dons, uh, kicked off another football season along with the cheer, and, uh, I received a report, this past Saturday was their first game, and the four teams that played on Saturday whipped their opponents, they didn't score one point. Four wins, not one point, so the Dons are off to a good start. Yes, well, no, that was in a way, they're, this weekend will be the new turf. Yeah, and then also, I just want to thank my colleagues on the dais here, well, it's not the dais, over here on the table, but for the dog park, we did the groundbreaking or, and that, and I understand it's on a fast track, so that's gonna be happening very, very soon. Um, and as my colleague, Dr. Sanchez, mentioned, we did have an opportunity to interact with the teachers and the administrators over at Rancho to welcome them back. Uh, Pam Ugar, I want to thank you for the senior, um, presentations. We see Ernie Vega, president of one of our senior groups. It was an opportunity to let the seniors know what was going on at Smith Park and how they would be moved and what was happening with the, the Smith Park, so the, the information was, was good for, for our senior groups. Um, I want to thank our city manager, Steve Camona, and Captain Hernandez for the press conference in downtown LA regarding the, the homicides, particularly the one over at, uh, the Seventy-Six Gas Station. Thank you for the, the information and, and, and keeping everyone apprised of what was transpiring there. Um, in lieu of the Minneapolis tragedy and shooting over there at the Catholic school, we called the public safety meeting. We invited, uh, St. Mary Anne, St. Hillary's, and St. Francis to meet with our public safety coordinator, to look at what they're doing, what they're not doing. Uh, we stepped up, uh, visibility with our sheriffs and with our Southwest Patrol in those areas. Um, I'm, I'm proud to share tomorrow, there will be an onsite assessment at St. Mary Anne's and at St. Hillary's by our public safety coordinator to look at safety measures at the site. We have to circle back with St. Francis, uh, to set up a time and date with them. There's things that you can do as teachers and as kids to create safety in the classroom, so that's transpiring, um, on, on a fast track. Uh, AYSO, uh, we had an opportunity to, uh, attend, uh, the AYSO kickoff, uh, Councilmember Laura, and I'll tell you, there, those kids were excited on the field. Oh, my gosh, that turf is just a game changer for them, and I want to thank Noah, you and your department for the research and the work that you really put into that, that artificial turf. Yeah, I mean, everyone's loving it. The Dons will kickoff on it, um, this weekend, I believe. But, um, seventy-two teams and over eight-hundred-and-forty athletes, athletes, uh, over with AYSO, they just grew over this past year again. So, AYSO is just really expanding their operation. Um, also, uh, let me echo concerts in the park. You know, our, when you look at all the volunteers, the Parks and Recreation staff, our public work staff, our media team, our sheriffs, our Southwest Patrol, it's all the work and everybody coming together, the hard work and preparation. Trust me, we see up here, we see your hard work. It doesn't go unnoticed and unrecognized, and we appreciate your hard work and efforts. And finally, um, I just want to thank everybody for, um... The cards, the flowers, the support, the outpouring love and support from my family and the loss of my mother. Just want to say thank you. And moving along with the agenda, we're gonna close in memory of former sheriff's captain, Mike Rothens. Captain Rothens served here from two thousand four to two thousand nine. He held numerous positions, anywhere from lieutenant, uh, to commander to captain, uh, and he, he served thirty-two years. He retired in twenty, uh, fifteen, so we're gonna, we're gonna close in his honor. Mayor Protem.
Mayor, I just want to add, I, I did get an opportunity to attend, uh, Captain Rothens' services and definitely just echo what you said, fine gentleman. As first captain, I had the opportunity to work with, and introduced me to the city in many different ways, so it was, uh, definitely a great, great man, but if I may, Mayor, take this opportunity to also, uh, eh, close in memory of your mother, Berbera Garcia, who, uh, brought a very fine young gentleman to this world, like yourself, the family, and she lived a good life, and so who just lost two loved ones. I know it's not easy, but they will continue being part of the family, your family. We love her, we love you, and we'll always be here for you, so.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Memory of Berbera Garcia.
So, we'll just take a moment of silence, if we may, please. Thank you. Close session, City Attorney?
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have two items, items A and B is listed on the closed session agenda. It's appropriate to recess into closed session.
Recession? We're gonna, we're going to, okay.